Hey, good afternoon, Shailene, how are you doing?
I'm doing all right, and you?
Doing well.
Hi, Shailene, it's Gail.
Hello, Gail.
It says on my invitation that it was canceled this meeting.
I don't know why it would say that.
Yeah, I don't either. Here we go. That was a very weird thing. Okay, well, I decided to get on anyway, but. I think you'll have quite a few people on here today. Hi, William, I'm Gail.
All right, good afternoon, Gail, how are you doing?
I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm not going to be talking while you're talking, but I just wanted to introduce myself. And I see. Hi, Anthony.
All right. Hello, Carter.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
How's everyone doing?
Gail reported getting a, a cancellation notice. Did that happen to anybody else?
I did, I did not get that.
Okay, good.
Just an FYI, I had sent out an email to a lot of people who, so I didn't send them. It via invitation, I just sent it out as an email with the link, and so hopefully. The link works and so. Whoever you might have sent it out to might have gotten that, I don't know.
Did you get that, Leah or Mason?
No.
Okay. Cool. Um, Shailene, before we start, have you, did you hear from anyone else in particular on the committee that we should be waiting on, Kristi or Jose or?
I didn't hear specifics from them.
Okay. Cool, I'm in it. All right, well, either way, I doubt, um, not that it really needs for us to meet quorum for this meeting, since it's just informational and we won't need to make decisions, but in the interest of time, I'll probably. Go ahead and start the meeting. I guess I don't, do I need to do? Form, formal world call, Shailene, if it's not a official meeting?
No, no, and I have everybody here.
Okay, yeah, so we have three CSPC members here, Leah, Mason and myself. Um, that's at least as far as I can tell, yeah, and several committee, community members as well. Yeah, I want to thank William Royston from the Director of Parks for talking with us today, so we can sort of better understand this. Tree removal process that's happening in Winston Lake. So I think the way that this is generally structured for the. The community members here is that we're going to try to funnel all questions through the committee members, so either myself, Leah or Mason. But the easiest way for you all to do that will just be to put them in the chat. I've received sort of quite a few questions from various people. And, and I know Mason and Leah both have several questions, so I imagine we'll get to quite a few different aspects. Generally, the questions that I'm hearing, if we were to try to synthesize them into categories, fall into three things, it's sort of. How decisions were made that got to this moment in time a little bit and understanding that process, second being. What can be done or what could be done to work together a little bit more in the near future, meaning on the specific project, meaning the golf course. Tree removal component, and then three, thinking a little bit more about how we sort of amend processes. So that sustainability and sort of nature-based considerations are sort of incorporated going forward, so. I think the, the best thing is for me to start by just asking. Mr. Royston to just give us a little bit of background and a little bit of context on the project itself, a little bit of the history. Before we sort of ask you some of our questions, does that sound good to, to you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you all for having me today. I think this is an important dialogue for us to, to have, so we have a better understanding about not only the way. That we do things and the reasoning behind it, but just so that you can kind of learn a little bit more about what we do in recreation, the. The tree removal work at Winston Lake. Has been a, it's, for lack of a better description, a long time coming. It's part of what I would call deferred maintenance over a number of years. And this is, this is one of the main ways that it's impacted Winston Lake Golf Course. When Winston Lake Golf Course was originally built, there really wasn't a tree maintenance plan. Or vegetative maintenance plan that would keep your sightlines open on the fairways from the tees. Over the years, as a result of that not really being addressed, the, the overall health of the golf course has deteriorated. To the point where we've, we've invested tons of money at certain times to make repairs to greens. Make repairs to irrigation systems. We, we spent a lot of money redoing our cart paths and moving cart paths away from. The root lines of large mature trees so that it doesn't, they don't become hazards for people who use golf carts. But it's, we can't grow grass in areas where we have shade on the golf course. And that's what you need to have in order to have a successful and a presentable golf course for the public, public to use, but one of the other things that. The, the, the overall tree canopy has created at the golf course is that whenever we have. Rains, and whether it doesn't, it doesn't really matter whether it's a light rain or, or heavy rain. There isn't enough air circulating through the golf course that can help dry, dry up the greens and drive areas where we don't want to have standing water. And it causes all, all kinds of issues with turf management for, for staff. In addition to that. The, on the maintenance end, we have about five full-time staff. People out at Winston Lake that maintain the entire course, that's all the greens, fairways, tee boxes, et cetera. They can't keep up with. The amount of leaves that fall on the golf course in the fall, and so. We hired, we hired an architect, we knew that the golf course wasn't really healthy. Nowhere close to where we need, need for it to be, and so we hired a consultant who's a landscape architect, Richard Mendel. Now, who has extensive experience doing this type of work, they did very similar work at Tanglewood. Did various work at other golf courses across, across the state. And came in and we walked the course, we drove the course. And tried to make a determination where our money could. The best place to invest the money in the course and get the biggest return on investment. And tree removal work was at the top of the list now. There are, the golf, Winston Lake Park as a whole is maybe just a hair under 400 acres. The golf course is about 220 acres and about forty-five, forty-six acres of that. Are, is additional tree coverage. And a lot of us not, there aren't mature trees, but a lot of tree growth and understory growth. Throughout the interior of the golf course that, one, creates safety issues for people who are out there on the golf course, who are using it. Secondly, creates. Creates substantially into the cost of repairs for cart paths and bridges and irrigation systems when the roots. Tree roots from certain species get down into the, started looking for. Looking for subsurface irrigation lines. So it was our idea that we would come in and do some tree removal that would bring the course back to life. Allow the course to become much more healthy in a sense that we'll be able to grow grass where, where, where we need to grow grass, water can, we, we would have improved drainage. But a lot of the, there will be some limbing up of some larger specimen trees where. We've had branches fall off that were either diseased or struck by lightning or there's damage for whatever reasons, but we're. Keeping those larger trees, but limbing them up to make them safer for people who were traversing throughout the golf course. Replace with, put the project out to bid. But prior to that held several, what we call ride-alongs through the golf course. And had several discussions with the Forsyth Audubon Society about. What that process would look like. Based on the feedback that we received, felt it was necessary to go ahead and move forward with the tree removal work, place the project out to bid and. That's kind of where we are now. It was easier on our end, and this is going to sound bad, but it was easier on our end to mark the trees that we were going to keep. The project in its entirety, if there are trees that are 15 inches in caliber and below, those are the ones that we will, we will be removing. Trees that are larger than that are, for the most part, due to remain unless they're diseased or damaged, and there's some others. Circumstances that will require their removal, but a lot of our larger, more mature trees on the, on the golf course. We're actually going to use those to help kind of clearly define where our fairways are, where people should be hitting the ball, and clearly define where out of bounds is. But, you know, from, from our perspective. From the city's perspective, I know, especially from mine. We have been routinely just drug through the mud. Because historically, Winston Lake Golf Course was considered to be the black golf course, and Reynolds Park was considered to be the white golf course. Reynolds Park does not have nearly the number of issues that we have at Winston Lake. Reynolds Park, the overall health of the golf course. Is far superior to that of Winston Lake, and as a. Me being in the position that I'm in, I have to weigh those and weigh those concerns, and honestly. Our golf courses should be maintained at a certain standard, at a certain level. And Reynolds Park is already there for the most part, they have some creek and drainage issues that we're working on. But we can't improve the overall health of Winston Lake Golf Course without removing the trees. That were not part of the original design when that course was originally built. The, the, the majority of the trees, if not all of them. Are coming out of the interior playing area of the golf course. The trees along the perimeter of our property boundary, those for the most part are going to remain what they are, if not, they're going to be made. Allowed to grow up larger, because it's part of the work, part of the master plan that was completed was to rework some of those. Tees, fairways and, and greens. We just don't have the money to move forward with that part yet, but we need to have the tree work complete so that we can move more of those pieces of it for. As a result, once the work is complete, our goal is to have a, a treat and vegetative maintenance plan. So that we don't ever have to come back years down the road and have to spend 720 or a million dollars doing the same type of work again. So that's kind of where we are. And I, I want to be clear in, when I, when I say this, but. Over the years, I know for at least the past 20, 25 years. This department has been very diligent and been great stewards of our parkland. We, within the last five years, we received a wildlife habitat certification for the quarry at Grant Park. We're currently working on a similar one for historic, for an area at Historic Bathra, we actually have someone under contract that's helping us get that pushed through. And for approximately the past 20 years. Anytime we've removed a tree in our park system, we've gone back in our same, in, in our park system and planted two of them. And we've done that, and actually are ahead of the schedule, we've planted more trees than we've, we've removed. But we have been good stewards of our parkland, we, when we did the stream restoration out at Miller Park. We walked that entire, entire street, uh, stream bank with the Forsyth Audubon Society, and they were able to point out some things to us that. Played directly into the way that the, the stream restoration was done, so. Even found a, a pine tree that if you didn't know any better, we just thought it was just a scraggly pine tree, just something that. Didn't matter much, but when you looked high up in the tree, you saw it was a nest for a golden herring that. And whether it's the same bird or a different bird, but there's a bird that's nesting in that tree that comes back every year. Once we completed the work, that tree was protected, and when we, even when we completed the work, the, the bird can continue to come back and nest in that same tree, so. We did walk the site the best that we could. Multiple times to see if those types of, we have any, those types of issues, we didn't notice any. But that's kind of where we are, and those are some of the reasons why we've decided to move forward with this part of the phase at Winston Lake.
Thanks for all of that, that's a lot of really helpful context and things that can't be gleaned from Winston Salem Journal articles, for example. I'm going to pass it to Leah first to just see if she has any follow-up based on anything you've said so far, other questions. And then I'll pass it to Mason and then I'll, will come back to me, so.
Yeah, thank you, um, thank you so much for your time and for explaining all of it, it is super helpful. I, I, and I, I do, I don't know anything about golf courses at all or golf course management, so I will. Definitely trust you on all of that, and I do think it's important that we acknowledge the. The inequity between the two golf courses, like you mentioned, and. Yeah, I think that's all like very important and. And helps, I think, helps me feel less bad about, about this, but I, I have questions about the. Scope of the work, I guess, and, and just the context within the larger. Picture of how Parks and Rec operates, like, is, is this an unusual occurrence to be removing this many trees in one place at one time? Is it, is it typical for, you know, the course of a year? I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how it, how it fits in to, to that as, for, for one thing.
And, and let me just, actually, Councilmember Monday, thank you so much for joining us, I just see that you've jumped on. He also added, asked the same question on the chat, except in the context of other golf courses as well, so. Maybe within the context of parks and also within the context of other golf courses would be helpful.
Leah, that was a great, great question, and the short answer to your question is yes. This is the first time we've had to do it. They performed very similar work at Tanglewood a few years ago for the, for the very same reasons. When you don't, everything requires maintenance, everything requires maintenance, even trees. And when you have. Over the years, the trees have grown and developed in areas and some, a lot of invasive species as well in areas of our golf course where. They shouldn't have been in the first place. It's, it's a learning lesson for, for the city, we knew that we would have to do some tree removal at some point, we knew this many, many years ago. But golf courses do remove trees. It's, it's not very common for them to be removed in the mass that we're doing. But it, it does happen. So Tanglewood went through something very similar, there are a couple of golf courses that our landscape architect mentioned. That he did similar work on near, and some other courses in the, in the state. Different types of trees depending on the location of, in the state where the, where they're located. But, you know, our, our goal is to just, is, is overall, it's the overall health. Of, of the course in, in an area, especially where we're inviting people to come out and enjoy outdoor public spaces. It's imperative that we do what we can to make sure that those, those spaces are as safe as possible, and so there's a safety component. In there as well, about six months ago, we had a large branch. That just missed a guy, a guy that was, a group that was on a golf cart, and. If that, if that tree limb, the size of that, it was, this limb was one of the, is part of one of the larger specimen trees that we're actually keeping. On the golf course, but that had struck that golf cart, it struck those, those citizens, there is no telling. The amount of damage that, that would have been caused, and which, that, that's a huge part of it as well. We just, my staff, and this is, this isn't a huge part of it, but it does play into our, into our decision-making, but. My, my maintenance staff has routinely been just beat up. Because they were the, the blame for the reasons why we couldn't maintain what we had out there, and, and honestly, I would challenge anyone, pull five people. Together and ask them to maintain 220 acres of, of green space, more or less a golf course, but. You know, they can't keep up with the work that they have. It's, it's far too costly for us to blow leaves and reestablish ditch lines, we spent $300,000. About four or five years, about three or four years ago, replacing irrigation system where we had tree roots, that we're getting is out the irrigation lines, and we had to dig up a. Huge chunk of the course to do that, so. This, this, in my opinion, falls in a line of deferred maintenance, if there are other courses that have had, that have deferred maintenance in the same manner which we have. Then they're going to run into the same source of issues at some point. Maple Chase is actually going through some pretty substantial renovations now. They were doing, redoing some of their greens, but they did do some very selective tree removal on that course as well. So it's not uncommon to see, but it's, you don't see us doing it in the mass that we're doing it every day.
Thanks, yeah, I, so I guess then, given that it is like, you know, a, a large project to be undertaking. I'm wondering like what the, what the protections are in place for the trees that you're hoping to keep and, and how. How you're communicating with the contractor about protecting those trees, I, the photo in the journal makes them look. Pretty, pretty tight, pretty close to the ones that are, that are coming down. And I'm, I'm just wondering about the, since it is, since it is a big removal project, what are the. What are the mitigation efforts both for the existing trees and, and just in terms of having. A conversation about the importance of mature forests and tree canopy in general and in Winston Salem.
So we have a, our, our consultant, um Richard Mandel is, he's under contract for, with us to provide construction project management. Which means he's going to be onsite. Multiple times a week. There are going to be certain weeks where he's out there every day. And there are specifications in construction details that are included in the plans for, for tree protection. For instance, um driving heavy equipment. Whether it's tracks or rubber tires through areas that have active roots, through the active root zones of the mature trees that we're trying to keep. That's not going to be, that's not going to be allowed. They're going to be, some of the larger specimen trees may actually have tree protection fencing. That's placed around them so that it keeps debris. Uh you, you're not allowed to stockpile anything within the drip line of the trees. Um and the contractor can actually be fined if they ignore those uh those, those protections, but. Before they start doing any clearing, all of the tree protection fencing is clearly identified. The first, the first part of it is going to be a building, uh erosion control measures throughout the golf course. Once the trees come out. Um, we have to get something green back there to help slow down the, the runoff and the erosion. And so all of those measures will be put in, put into place. And once the leaves begin to kind of fall off of the trees, that's when the actual removal um will happen. But there's an entire section of tree protection fencing um. And vegetative uh protection that's included as part of the bit package. In, in addition to that, we're protecting our. Uh golf cart paths and any other above ground or below ground amenities that we have out there. So it's a very delicate process. They're not going to just come through and just clear cut everything. It has to be staged and performed very, very. Uh very well so that they don't cause extensive damage to anything that we're asking the contractor to, to protect.
Leah, do you have anything else? Or you want me to pass it?
I mean, I guess I, I just think it, um I, I think there are some questions in the chat that might get at this, but just wondering about um. You know, are, are, are there going to be effort? You, I mean, the replacing two trees for everyone cut down is. Great. I don't, you know, are there plans for something like that um with, with this or there um? Yeah, other, other mitigation efforts for tree canopy for, for city, city land.
Um, we, so the, the plan does, we are going to be doing some. Tree, selective tree plantings at Winston Lake. We're gonna need to see what the fairways and what that landscape looks like once the tree removal work is complete, but. There may be a mixture of evergreen indecisuous trees that are planted in there. Um I, the trees help. Um, to a, to a point at a golf course, because they help define, they almost serve as walls between fairways. Um between certain fairways. So if you know you're driving on hole number one, um. You should have a kind of like an alleyway or, or corridor that you should be playing golf in on that particular hole. Um. We're going to do the best that we can to keep as many trees as we can to, to define that, but we will, our goal is to come back and do, and do some additional plantings. Whether that's, there probably is some evergreen, uh some additional evergreens that are planted. There probably wouldn't, won't be pines because they, they'll stand up very well with some of our storms and winds. They have the tendency to. Um snap like toothpicks sometimes, especially when you have that amount of airflow coming through the course. Um. We do plan on doing some planting. I can't tell you exactly what the extent of that will be. Um, but we will continue to plant trees throughout our park system. Plant two for everyone that we remove. Uh that's been a standard ever since I've been here and. It was just something that we decided to do because we felt it was necessary. Um parks, great cities are known for great parks. And there are, we've never made it a point to develop every acre of our parkland. Because it just says, it doesn't need to be. Uh there are some very crucial, there's some very interesting things. Ecologically that are happening at different parks and for different reasons, and we celebrate those. We, we talk about those. Actually, I have a videographer. Um, that, that I was watching one of these nature channels on YouTube that she's supposed to go to sleep to and it kind of pans through. Like close-ups of deer and streams and creeks. He's actually working on some of, something like that for us. So that we can share with the public to let people know just how beautiful our park system is. So we're very in tune with that. Um, I can't see us planting trees um in our park system, throughout our park system changing. Um and we also work with Keep Winston Beautiful who does, they come out and do plantings annually. Um, and they invite the public to come out and though that happens annually and. Almost, I've, I haven't seen an instance where it hasn't happened in a park. Or in the right of way adjacent to a park. And so we'll continue to work with them, continue that program, but it's something that we've been doing for at least twenty years.
I just wanted to piggyback off that question a second because I heard you say the two for one comment uh in the meeting we had a few weeks ago about the. You know, the, the uh, the meeting about a potential sort of nature-based resolution or whatever. I could understand for practical reasons that the, like, again, I'm going off of information that says thousands of trees. Like whatever that means, one thousand to nine, ten thousand, I guess, twenty thousand, whatever, I don't know what it is. But you know, I could see the replacement of those and very pragmatically, not going back at Winston Lake Park, right? Like if there's not space, you don't just plant them in. Right. But it does seem like if, if you all are upholding to that practice. Which I picked up on at that meeting and Councilmember Monday picked up on tonight, that like, that's quite powerful for you to. Cost so confidently and effectively demonstrate that that's happening. It seems like a good opportunity for. For you all to, to like advertise that replacement in a sense, mostly because the headline on this is the number, right? It's the number of trees and the scale of the removal, even if it is deferred because it hasn't been managed in forty, fifty years. Um, and it seems like something that our committee frankly would love to, and or. Shaleen's office would love to like work with you all on um and help identify and or like do some of that work in and of itself, so. That two for one thing I could see happening at other parks and this being sort of an opportunity or a. A mandate in a sense to like push that work forward potentially.
I see when we, I communicated that to um media outlets and. I just, I'm not, I can't control what they print, you know, so you know, it's, uh we do do that. We will continue to do that. Um, it's just, to me, it's the right thing to do, you know, um. I appreciate the kind of words. Um, but I also think, I mean, I, I'm proud that I had the support of the city. And still have the support of the city because no one asked us to do it. Um, it was just something we felt needed to be done and will continue to do so, but I appreciate the kind of words. We'll figure out some sort of way to better celebrate that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I completely understand. The, they, they're going to write what they write, so there's only so much you can do. Um I'm going to pass the floor to our other main uh committee member here. Um Mason Stevens uh for him, if he has any questions that he wants to ask.
Oh yeah, I always have questions. Uh, hi everybody. Um, so. I, I'm mostly concerned that we're going to be replacing. Uh maintenance labor with um herbicides or pesticides or something like that that may run off into our waterways. And so I, I'm a little bit concerned that like, you know, increased uh sun penetration may lead to more invasives taking over the spaces. And it becomes a maintenance nightmare in a different way. So I, I was wondering if you had, if this was part of the plan as well and um. Uh, because I think there's an opportunity to not use um herbicides and pesticides here um. If that's possible.
There, okay, so. Patrick Cunningham is my golf course superintendent who's in charge of the maintenance, all of our ma- our maintenance team at Winston Lake Golf Course. Um, we don't use, the chemicals that we use at Winston Lake are not. The typical types of chemicals that most commercially, we're here to make money golf courses use. Uh because we want to remain sensitive to the environment that they're being used in. Just downstream of the golf course is Winston Lake. And, and so we're very conscious of that. Um we, it's. The cost for the types of chemicals that have the most minimal impact on the environment are extremely expensive. Um, we just, we aren't budgeted for that. However, we are very um mindful. Of the types of chemicals that we use, the amount of chemicals that we use. And honestly, the, the majority of the spraying that happens at Winston Lake Golf Course is, is, is used on the greens. To kill fungus and rot, to stop, like it's almost like an infection that you can get on your skin. It infects the greens and it kills the grass. Um, the majority of the chemicals that we use is, are for greens maintenance. Um, we've had frequent, frequent water testing um in the creek. And some of the streaks that run through Winston Lake Golf Course and haven't found an abnormally high amount of chemicals um in that water. Uh before and after rains. And so we, we periodically test that. Uh we also do soil samples. Uh it haven't noticed, based on our findings, we aren't causing substantial harm to the environment. Um, now I'm going to say this though, it's very, very difficult to have pristine golf course. Without using some chemicals. We are going to have to do some spraying. We are going to have to do some, use some roundup, but. It's not, it won't be the types of chemicals that you would see on the golf courses there, like at the US Open. It's nowhere near, near that level. We, for several reasons, we, we can't even afford those chemicals. Um, that's, that, that's part of it, but other thing is they're just, they're just not, even if we could, they're not suitable. For the environment that we have at Winston Lake. Uh Winston Lake Golf Course is part of a larger park. It's just a portion of that park. And being mindful of the entire health of the, the entire park itself is, that's how we, that's how we're bandaging it. So it's at a thirty thousand foot level. And it's one of the reasons why when we did phase two improvements at Winston Lake Park. We dredged the lake and the last time that lake was dredged was about thirty years ago. And that dredged material was actually used to build the driving range. They brought that, that silt up into the park. And use that silt to create the driving range. We did, we followed that exact same process when we dredged the lake about two years ago. And so a lot of that silt material was brought up into the park. Uh and used to kind of, and we spread that material out after it dried. We spread it out on the driving range. And reuse some of that, reuse some of that material. And as a result, we found that the water quality in Winston Lake. Is way higher than what it used to be. Uh, we were seeing diseased fish, uh fish with like bruises and like. Like cuts and just, just like, almost like warts on them. And that was directly, from what we learned, was directly tied into the water quality, but we've. We're working our way, worked our way through that and the water quality there in the lake is much better than what it was now, so. We're going to have to spray. We do it minimally. Um. Um, I think over the years, if you look at the understory, the reason why we're, where we're at the point where we are now with the tree removal is because. They haven't used the amount of chemicals out there that you would typically use at a golf course, because anybody can just go spray it, kill everything. And just go, but we haven't, historically haven't done that at Winston Lake Golf Course and we won't begin to do that now.
Okay, yeah, makes sense to me. Um. So I, I remember you said a couple of minutes ago about um in a lot of the places that you're going to be removing trees. You're going to have to have something to reduce the erosion, correct? Um.
Yes.
So uh I'm curious, does this mean that we can maybe um introduce natives to like either revert it. Into um some sort of a grassland or a native prairie lands um and possibly support native species or even. Um create some like wetland filter areas um along the riparian zones. Um and like reintroduce natives in order to help with the filtering effect and maybe support biodiversity that way.
Uh part of what our landscape parks or part of what our consultant has done uh is that, so. There are a lot of, we, we found that there are a lot of invasive plants in areas where we don't, they don't help some of the. Or uh more wet areas that feed into the creeks and streams down at Winston Lake Golf Course. And so it's part of that removal. Part of the tree removal and cleaning all of that out is going back with native plants and species. Um and grasses to help kind of filter some of the water and filter some of the chemicals and get some of the harmful things that could end up in the. The creek, to kind of filter that out before that happens. So that's built into our plan.
Great, great. Um, a- and I guess as an extension of that, um maybe. This is also an opportunity to educate some of the population on what we're doing with that. Like I was thinking maybe some sort of signage showing that like, oh hey, this is a wetland filter or something like that, or um this is a native plant garden. You know, something along the course might be. An opportunity, just wanted to put it out there as well. Not sure if there's plans for that, but um.
We, we, we don't have plans for that. Um, I don't think that's a bad suggestion. Uh we've done that in other areas and other parks where we've, we wanted to draw attention to. Uh a particular design or particular park amenity that we wanted people to pay, pay attention to, so. I'll take that into consideration and see what we can do to provide some sort of signage out there, but it has to be done in a way that it doesn't impact. The speed or the, the, the golf course as a whole, but I definitely think that we can, we can do that.
Yeah, definitely. Like maybe along bridges or something like that where people are already walking anyway, makes sense.
I mean, there's a scenario where it like gets applied at like the first tee box or something, just like it doesn't have to be like, like it could be sort of. Out of the way, I guess, of the actual golf play itself and, you know.
While where people are waiting, right?
Yeah, like in the clubhouse. Yeah, again, I don't play golf either, so I can't say exactly where, but.
A lot of the times there ends up being lines at tee boxes, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I wanted to piggyback quickly and then I can let you ask anything else, Mason, on the idea that um. Part of this is like, a lot of people seeing that something's happening and not really. Knowing that it was happening and having some level of concern that, you know. Hmm uh the environment as a stakeholder was not sort of considered on some level. I mean, having previous, previous meeting with you and this meeting sort of reinforces that on many levels it was and, and I, I fully value that, but. I think more fundamentally, it seems like, and this sort of speaks to Wendy's question in the chat, sort of. The extent to which like people who are, I can't speak to Richard as a consultant, but what I can see from his website is he does golf courses. It doesn't say that he's like an environmental specialist or anything. I think. Our concern is that sort of like people who are sort of very intentionally thinking about. The concerns that this committee and the people on this call have sort of weren't consulted or aren't consulted in the process. But it seems like you do have a lot of expertise in this, and so I do really value that, but I just wonder the extent to which we could. Like, sort of see the, the GIS maps and the plans of like the cuttings and somebody else earlier asked like the, this. Precise criteria of like how decisions were made about certain trees over others and the maps and the plans of where the native vegetation is going to. Go and how that was decided and things like that. I think a lot of that information would sort of like go a long way towards helping. The people on this call and others to sort of better understand how we got.
Sure, like a lot of us know our native species pretty well here and uh and we're, you know, we'd definitely be happy to give input and. Help the city pick these sort of things, you know, that definitely uh. Yeah, definitely having input for our committee at some point would probably be useful.
So typically, my go-to. Group has been the Thought About Society. Um, they've been an invaluable resource. Um. I, I've worked with Don Lindle um for a number of years and I've worked with Chris, Chris Marsh on, on a lot of things, so. But like, we can't do it all. We, we don't claim to be the experts in everything. Um. Richard, our, our consultant. Is, because he's a landscape architect, it almost comes with the job. He's, he's, he's found a niche. But you can't love the outdoors. You, you can't not like being outdoors and not like being outside in the environment. Not enjoy ecology, wildlife and those things and really be the kind of landscape architect that we would hire. Um, he is passionate about the game of golf. He loves the game of golf and he's found a niche, but. Um, he is passionate about the game of golf, he loves game golf and he's found a niche, but he's been very diligent in ensuring that. We're not just, he's not force feeding a solution to us that wasn't well thought out. We've, the Audubon Society has been a group that we reach out to pretty regularly. Um, they gave us some invaluable data up at Long Creek when we went through and began doing phase one up there, I mean, they actually gave us a list. Uh, this list had to be twelve pages, it had every single solitary plant, every single solitary bird. Every salamander, cricket frog and everything else that was out there called in Long Creek home. They gave they gave us a comprehensive list and those areas, um, those areas where these 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 animals and plants were thriving at at the park. Has grown because we've expanded areas to for that that they can use. To for Long Creek to call it home, so we have a large conservation easement out there as a result of that, and so we will continue to work with. The Forest Science Audubon Society, I know Shaleen um wasn't here. Uh, wasn't an employee with the city back when a lot of these other projects weren't were happening. Um, but I don't mind having or having that open discussion with you all or anyone else. Um, to keep you informed, allow you to provide some input or some some suggestions because we welcome that.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable going forward, um, and to speak to Don Lindell and or Chris Marsh, I mean. They are also people who I have emails from like sort of asking about this specific park and sort of. Like if I'm if I wanna quote Don precisely, it says it brings up a recurring question how decisions are made regarding our tree canopy, who is consulted. How the pros and cons are weighed, and so I think like irrespective of what happens at Winston Lake, I think there's this sort of like. Desire for us to like, for whether it's Audubon very explicitly or it's Shaleen's department very explicitly or. Andy for Keep Winston Beautiful or our committee or whoever sort of very explicitly sort of. And this speaks to Chris's sort of push from the meeting we had a month ago, sort of like. There needs to be somebody who's sort of independent of all the other considerations, like what the golf course looks like, sort of speaking very explicitly. For the environmental impact in and of itself, I think is is the concern that a lot of people have, including Don as an example.
Yeah, and and I can, I can understand that and golf courses are tricky. I can't think of another golf course anywhere that has amount of tree cover that Winston Lake has. Um, in the same breath, I can't think of another golf course as amount of issues as related to the because of the tree canopy. That we have at Winston Lake either, but. It's hard to, golf courses have not historically been known to be these ecological models. For the environment, they're just routinely historically have not. And so I I understand the concerns and I understand where you're coming from, uh, what were the concerns that are coming from, but. If 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 I design a playground. In an area, I have to make sure or any park community, I have to make sure that we don't have fallen branches. That we don't have standing water that breeds mosquitoes, that um is difficult to get to like. Building the nicest playground in the world and putting it on top of Pilot Mountain serves it, it serves no use. But making sure that whatever whatever we build is as safe as possible, uh, it's attractive as possible. And fun for people to use depending on what that element is. We've tried really, really hard to do that, um, and even at Winston Lake. We were part of what Richard did was rework and reshape the golf course around some areas where we wanted to maintain some trees. Um, we haven't, we have to do some tree removal to get to that point. Uh, first to get before we can get additional funding, before we can move on with the with additional phases of work, but. We try to be mindful of that, it's very, very difficult to do on a golf course. For the reasons, ninety nine percent of the reasons why we are at this point is due to deferred maintenance. And so uh we will, whether this is this project or any other ones that we have um coming up, we do. Thoroughly, very thoroughly go through and make try to make the right decisions in terms of what what we're gonna remove and what we're gonna keep. Um, but I don't have any issues sharing those plans with you all, I mean, it's. The more the more eyes on it, the. The merrier.
Yeah, that 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 sounds great, and to your points, I mean. Yeah, if there was regular maintenance and all these trees were moved as one year old seedlings, like we wouldn't be having this call. Every year, every year, yeah, um, and I think a few other things you said very early on. You, I can't remember the number, uh, fifteen centimeter diameter, I think. Which isn't a small tree, but you know, is preserving the oldest, at least the forty to fifty year old trees or older, I think, depending on species. On the landscape, which disproportionately do a lot of the carbon and and water filtering work. Um, with that, the the little ones do provide a lot of habitat for a lot of diverse species, so there's a lot of biodiversity concerns with that. But I mean, the fact that you're also talking about the interior and not on the edges means you're not minimizing sort of um. You know, some of the like larger scale habitats that that are there, um, so I think all of that, while it's not ideal, sort of do speak to some level of. Thought that went into some parts of this, some parts of this process in and of itself. Um, Mason, uh, do you have anything, do you have any other questions?
One more, yeah, one more thing, um, uh, and I'll make this my last question. So I saw that there, maybe I just read it and I may be misinformed here, but um. That there was a million dollar budget for moving the trees and I saw that it would cost somewhere around seven hundred thousand. So I was wondering if there was a remaining plan for the three hundred thousand and if. We could carve off some of that budget both for the educational signage and potentially for making some sort of a pollinator garden. Or revamp up the clubhouse gardens or something like that, so we could actually use this as an opportunity to maximize biodiversity. And um, you know, I I don't know if you guys know this, but actually forests are a pretty low biodiversity place. We could actually use this as an opportunity to increase biodiversity on the golf course rather than decrease it, so. Just a suggestion again, not sure if.
So the the remaining, the remaining money, so we we have a contract for approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's not to say that that's gonna be the final cost once everything is complete. Uh, however, our plan, we've been having regular meetings with a committee out at Winston Lake Golf Course who. Was comprised of a lot of the users, whether golf coaches, first tee, uh, my staff. And some other very interested parties uh from the Women's Golf Association as well as Men's Golf Association. And our goal was to, once all the work was complete, was to come back and say. Take a look at how much money we have left, have some open discussions with them about what they would like to see done next. We do have to do some work on the tee boxes. I would have to go back and go through every plan or every sheet of the the construction package to see to what extent. We can do some of the things that you're that you're requesting. If we can't do a lot of that now, we can definitely keep those items in into in consideration as we move forward. In in future phases, but any changes that I ask for them to make on those drawings now. Uh, are gonna be very costly. In a nutshell, we don't know, we don't know how what how the additional money is gonna be spent. Yes, there are some opportunities to do some of the things that you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, cuz I I could see us like, you know, our budget and the sustainability committee is effectively zero. Giving us like in the range of ten thousand dollars will stretch a very, very long way for uh for us to do a native plant installation, so. Um, and I'm sure we could have it be community led in some organization or some fashion, um, just something to keep in mind. That's all for me.
Great, thanks, Mason, uh, this is all wonderful, um, I've just, I know we have about ten minutes left. I think the main thing that I wanna sort of close with and ask about. Is mostly thinking about looking forward, right, like. I think what we have now in the city and anyone who works for the city or is a council member of the city can correct me, is we have. A great leader of parks who clearly, in my opinion, from the two meetings I've had with you, like sort of has some. As a care and a desire to sort of like preserve vegetation, um, especially some wild components of it. We have a great sustainability leader, we have council members who care about this. Um, city managers on some level that care about this too, although I've met with less of you, to be honest, although I do know Ben on the call. And our committee is sort of like sort of revamped in this sort of new era where like I think we're all like engaged on the in the same level, like we all want. Similar things, albeit understanding sort of competing interests, so I think I'd just love to hear from you, like what do you think? How do you think we all work together to sort of be all involved in these processes? Going forward for any present plans or future plans around sort of large scale vegetation changes that might occur in any parks?
I mean, that's a, I don't, that's a good question. I don't have a, I've never had an issue meeting or talking with anyone. Uh, I think that. If we'd had this conversation earlier on in the process, I think it would have made ease a lot of nerves. I could have some discussions with 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 Shaleen and see what we can do to kind of figure that out. This doesn't happen that often. We haven't developed, the the last piece of, or the last two parks that we developed from scratch. That neither one of them had a tremendous amount of tree cover, if any at all, when one was Cory at Grant Park and what was the next one, the other one was Jameson. We've, I'm open to having those those uh those discussions with you and this group um and anyone else that wants to participate. I think that knowing who our stakeholders are, knowing who our users are, knowing those people who have the concerns and they have interests. In the health of our park system, uh, to me, those are resources. And so I, when I don't have all the answers, when I'm trying to figure things out, this these are the people that I go to, so. And a lot of times it's it's done earlier on in the process long before we get to this point, um, to kind of get that feedback early on, to make sure we're. We're doing the best that we can to address many, many of those concerns, but. Real quick, while there was one comment in the chat. About the forty six acres of trees and let me clarify something, so. These aren't, it's not forty six acres of mature trees. These are areas where you may have. Seventy, eighty percent of invasive understory brush. Within a canopy area, it's forty six acres of that total that we've measured on the drawing. So we're not removing forty six acres of trees throughout the entire park, it's, but they, it was easier to mark the trees. To keep in those areas than it would be to mark, you know, to then attack the ones to remove. Which is typically how it's done, so I wanted to be, I wanted to make sure, I didn't mention that earlier and I wanted to make sure that I made that point to you all. It sounds a lot worse than it is. But again, there's no, very little if any exterior, uh, all the exterior portions of our park. Are we doing any tree removal at all? Um, what we done, what we did instead was shift our fairways over. So that and do some selective limbing on those trees so that we can get the sunlight that we need and that's it. So I just wanted to be clear about that, uh, so there weren't any any concerns uh in that regard.
Yeah, yeah, that's all really helpful, um, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, put what I asked before another way is. I do think that uh particularly the three CSPC members on this call, but also Shaleen's office sort of. Like I said, I think we're in a a new space where we have a lot of expertise, Audubon also has expertise. Um, I think yeah, Chris and Don and others from that organization are valuable resources. Um, and yeah, I think we're all just sort of looking for a better understanding of how decisions were made, but then, yeah, wanting to be as much as possible. Part of that decision going forward, so I think the the. Well, let me ask this first, we have five minutes left, I was just gonna synthesize a few pieces of information, does anybody else have any other questions that you didn't get answered thoroughly or? Maybe we could follow up as well, Leah, Mason or anyone in the chat?
Um, I don't know if you saw it, but I was wondering if it would be possible to access the recording of this meeting since I missed the first part of it. And I'd also like to share it with like Don Lindle and Chris Marsh since they weren't able to apparently be here.
I will be, I will be loading the minutes and the recording into the agenda section of our webpage, which is where all our city meetings go.
Great, I know where that is, great, thanks.
Yeah, and I can make sure it gets sent to uh any relevant parties. And so I think my closing things would be also like any maps or documents sort of of the process. Maybe even timeline, we didn't really discuss that per se, but like any of that information that you could share with us on this specific project. Um, would be valuable and I acknowledge that this project's well into the process, money's already been allotted and all of that information, so that's. Um, but it'd be maybe if there's insight or help that we can have whenever we see that information, we can, we can let you know or. Um, at least have a conversation about it, which I appreciate you being really open to. Going forward, again, I think that there's sort of this desire for us to sort of better connect and like we've. I we have never met and I've been on this committee a year or so, and so like the fact that we've been on two calls and that timeline is already encouraging in and of itself, so. Um, hopefully, yeah, we sort of continue to find ways to sort of better be involved. Um, and sort of guide through parks and vegetation and all that stuff, so I I wanna end by thanking you all so much for your time. William, it was, I really appreciate you spending the time and being so thoughtful and everything that you've done.
Not a problem, um, I would invite you, maybe we sit down and have another conversations, I think if I went through and kind of told you some of the other things that we're doing. Throughout our park system. Just been ecologically responsible, sustainable, things that we do involve our programs and I think you'd be, you'd have a much better. Uh, outlook and and feel much more comfortable knowing that we're doing the best that we can to. To keep our park system one of the best ecologically friendly places in the state.
That's right, and the things you do, wait day to day, month to month, aren't. Journal, but when it says ten, you know, thousands of trees, completely understand that this is sort of a shock and awe moment for a lot of people, which is why we had this, but. But yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to take up that opportunity, maybe we can even have you. At a future CSPC meeting, sort of give us some updates on projects, maybe it's even a quarterly meeting or something that we check in on or. Something like that, so thank you again for your time and thanks everyone for showing up, um, thanks Shaleen for organizing the call.
No, it's no problem, thank you all, I appreciate you, have a blessed rest of your day.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to you as well, bye everyone.